This meeting, is this mic on? Aha. This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out. The first thing on our agenda, as always, is the prayer and the pledge. If you could please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight to acknowledge your gift to humanity in the form of your Son. We thank you for our free will and the map you have laid out for us in your word. Lord, help this board and this district. Bring glory to your name, not just through our words, but our actions as well, as we represent the children of this great town. Most of us are blessed beyond what we deserve and help us to remember that our short time on this earth is really not about us after all. Lord, forgive us of our sins and give us the peace and courage to forgive others as we deal with difficult issues and trying circumstances involved with educating children. May our actions bring glory to you in all that we do and we pray for your healing of this world we live in today. Thank you for the hope and the peace you give and for the smiling faces of children. I pray this in my Savior's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we do have some action coming out of executive session and I will entertain a motion to handle that.
I move to authorize the board president to accept and execute the mediation, resolution, and settlement documents in the federal lawsuit brought by former employee Jerry Ward, which ends the pending lawsuit.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we are moving on now to special recognitions.
At this time Reverend Hager has a special recognition that he'd provide on behalf of Leadership Tasby.
It's been a little while since I've been here, the president of this group. President Washman, Superintendent Crawford, members of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize one of our colleagues who recently completed the Leadership Tasby course of study. Leadership Tasby was begun in 1993 at the way of advanced leadership training to experienced board members. It's nationally recognized as the premier leadership training program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards. Upon successful completion of the course of study, the recognition of master trustee is bestowed, which I guess means we have to do everything you say. Leadership Tasby is a highly selective program where normally only one or more applicants are accepted as a member of the class. Thirty-six participants over a ten-month period. Class means five times in five different Texas cities. They hear from nationally recognized speakers to tour a variety of school districts and conduct personal research on a topic of relevance to Texas school trustees. Class members represent districts from all parts of Texas with varying sizes of student enrollment and varying levels of property wealth. Leadership Tasby asks participants to work a little harder, be challenged with new thoughts, and renew their commitment to make a difference on behalf of schoolchildren, Tyler ISD, and the entire state of Texas. Tonight Aaron joins the ranks of more than seven hundred Leadership Tasby alums. I'm pleased to present him with his certificate as a lifetime member in the Leadership Tasby Alumni Association. Please. [applause]
All right, congratulations, Aaron. Third one coming down the pike as well. Okay, we have approval of minutes next. I will say on item C, there's an amendment to those minutes, so when we do a motion for this, we'll move for the approval of minutes for July 22nd and August 6th and the amended minutes for August 19th. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes for July 22nd, August 6th, and the amended minutes for August 19th.
Okay, may I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Moving on to continuous improvement, goal 2.1, Advanced Placement Scores.
As Mr. Gary Brown, Executive Director of Career, College and Career comes to the table, it's our pleasure to present to y'all the AP performance from last year. Part of our, one of our three major goals is college readiness and we certainly are very proud of the way that our results are trending upward annually. Mr. Brown?
Very good. President Washman, Dr. Crawford, and trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information regarding our AP student performance from this previous year. The specific goal that we established four years ago is part of the student improvement, continuous improvement goals, said that we would like to see increases of 2% annually in our AP scores, that's scores of three, four, and five from our students. You can see the baseline, in 2016, we were at 44.5% as a district and then fast forwarding to this most recent administration in May, our target was 50.5 and I went ahead and included year four target, that is the current students that are taking classes this year's and they will test in May. This is the specific goal that we're looking at or the target that we're looking at. For this year it's 50.5 as we move forward and then we'll look at some of the data and the results from that. Just a reminder of where AP scores fit in to college career military readiness accountability. We have the big three areas, the college readiness, you see the criteria that you're familiar with. Hopefully we all are becoming more familiar with these criteria. The career readiness, the CT certifications and certificates, and then the military readiness enlisting in the armed forces. These specifically speak to the first bullet, to the AP scores of three or higher of our high school students. The actual numbers, and I've just got this on one big table and you can look through them, you can look down to specifically the year of 2019, that these students took this test in May, four months ago. They received the results back over the summer and we've been able to pull the data together now. While the target was 50.5, our students actually had an increase over that target of 3.7 and if you look at the preceding year in 2018, it actually increased 4.1%. So, good job by our teachers and our students preparing for the exams and seeing some success. And I went ahead and added the 2020 goal, once again, that's the current students that will be taking AP exams in May. The mean comparison, I think this is very good to see how our students are doing in comparison to students from across the state of Texas. And to keep in mind, this includes all students, public school, private school, charter school, literally hundreds of thousands of students that are taking these exams each year. And in Tyler ISD, our students outperformed their peers from across the state on 18 of the 26 exams that we administered. So, we're talking about the average score of all of our students compared to the average score of all of the students in the state of Texas. And this is a table, I won't go through each one of these, I would, these are the top differentials between the state average score and the Tyler ISD average score on these particular AP exams. And the one at the top has to be highlighted, the AP Environmental Science, more than a full point higher. And on a five-point scale, that's a pretty, that's significant. And actually all these are, so you can go through the Calculus B.C., European History, Literature, and AP Biology. The next comparison looks at passing percentage of Tyler ISD students compared to their peers from across the state. So, the number of students that actually able to score that three, four, or five on their AP exam, we outperformed Tyler ISD students did, their peers from across the state on 19 of 26 AP exams. And once again, there are 19 of these, but I just, we have the top five here in terms of differential, differentiation from the state average, I mean, the state passing rate to the Tyler ISD passing rate. And AP European History coming in at the top there, as far as that passing rate increase. Just a reminder, as the students are taking the test, one of the goals that we've set and this has been a focus amongst the faculty and on the campuses, is that we want to see the accumulation of AP scores. It's not just a target to take one test and pass on one day, we want to see multiple courses and exams and success. So, the actual awards that college board presents each year, AP Scholar are three exams that are passing scores. The AP Scholar with Honor, it moves up to four. Scores of three, four, or five for a high school student. AP Scholar with Distinction moves that up to five or more AP exams. And then this final criteria, extremely lofty, I think it's one of the, probably the most prestigious academic things a student can do in high school, it's eight or more AP exams while in high school. Not only that, they have to maintain an average of four or higher on all of their exams that they take. And so, once again, it's a table, it's a lot of numbers up there. You can look to the far right column in the year 2019, this is the most recent, in May. You can look down the list there and see kind of where we are in some of the improvement and growth. The bottom line on total AP Scholar awards in the last four years, we've been able to more than double that and that's, that's a testament to the teachers and the students and the focus that they've placed on the testing and on the preparation for the testing to be successful. A particular area would be the National AP Scholars, I mentioned, that's the eight exams or more of a four or higher and that number's gone up. It went up significantly last year and we had another jump to 12 this year. And I will say of those 12, three of those were underclassmen. So, we're going to see them take some more tests this year and they'll be adding to their total. And this is just, just a bar graph to show kind of just the gradual increase, we want to see that number continue to climb for our students taking these tests. New AP courses that will bring more students into the AP program with opportunities to take exams and earn college credit through that process. AP European History is being offered at John Tyler for the first time and very glad to see three full sections of students enrolled in this course and preparing for success as they move forward. And the AP Seminar is a new course that was offered to students at Robert E. Lee High School. We have two sections of that this year. That is, that's the AP data.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments?
I'll just say, great work on your leadership and then also all the hard work of all the many, many, many teachers who helped prepare these kids. There were a couple of scores that were kind of low as you looked at across everything. Are there, what are the specific actions that, what happens when you see data like that and how is that used to improve?
Well, I appreciate the question. The positive results certainly are a testament to the teachers. Professional development is the key. So, when we identify particular areas that we have students not performing at the level we expect them to, there are AP Summer Institutes that teachers are able to attend as well as bringing outside training in to get these teachers prepared, not only, the content generally is there, it's getting them prepared in the pedagogy, in instructional strategies, and delivery of the material.
Thank you.
One thing that we've done a better job at is getting outside of the pine curtain to be exposed to some of these opportunities. So, whether it's bringing someone in or getting up to Dallas to get some of that rigorous exposure for our teachers, I think it's really helped us. Something Gary and I talked about when he was Principal Lee and then now that he's gone on to this role and he can really target that, it's really been a boost for us, we're able to do that. So, we'll do the same thing with the, with the ones that are struggling. But 19 out of 26, I think, is what we're kind of hanging our hat on right now.
About the same.
Yeah, so pretty good. Yeah, okay.
I have one quick question, I'm sorry. On the AP Seminar at Lee, did the students apply for that or did they just have to sign up for it?
These are open to all students, so equity and access for our students. We, it's a brand-new course, we gave them a course description, we're able to answer questions that they may have. This is actually a forerunner, it prepares them for AP research that they will take, will be offered for the first time next year. So, they formulate their research hypothesis in the current year, learn about research, fact-finding, primary source, such, and then they'll actually do the research and carry it out next year.
Dr. Nation, that's part of the initiative to try to develop more national merit scholars. So, that's kind of bundled in there with that, because that's where they come through from the AP program.
Absolutely.
Again, may I say thank you. I always compliment you because we're seeing tremendous growth in the area of our AP. However, I am concerned about the numbers I see for John Tyler. What are we doing to recruit students and introduce them to these AP opportunities?
Well, the faculty and the counselors on the staff obviously putting that information in front of them and encouraging them to have that, that open mindset, to challenge themselves academically. So, I think that you're going to see that happen. I was very excited to see the AP European History. If you look at the data from this most previous year, that course, no students were taking that course last year. And I believe as of last week, we had 82 students enrolled in AP European History. So, we're going to see an increase in those AP numbers at John Tyler. The other one is the teacher professional development and stability that'll happen within those courses. So, it's the same teacher year in and year out that are working with the students. And the dual credit program, we don't talk, this is not about dual credit, but we have a very healthy and there's been tremendous growth in the dual credit program as well. One is not taking away from the other, they are both increasing at the same time. But those are just, that's just some of the things that we're doing to get the numbers up.
There are. Reverend Mason, I'll add to this. Mr. Sanchez probably can speak a little bit better to this, but I want to say probably 70% of your students that choose the early college high school program or the campus, that experience actually probably reside in the John Tyler feeder pattern. So, I think with the advent of AP versus dual credit, you're going to start seeing a flip, not just in this specific location, but everywhere. I think the early college, dual credit opportunities that are out there for students to go and grab that dual credit while they're still in high school is something we're going to, I hope we can recognize that as a fruitful thing for us and not something that is a barrier for us when we look at data. So, I think that some of the kiddos that probably would normally go into advanced placement courses are probably choosing the early college concept as opposed to doing the AP stuff.
Do we recruit students at the middle school level so that they are familiar and begin the process of applying for these courses?
Absolutely. We have pre-AP courses in all of our middle schools. Well, excuse me, can we call them pre-AP anymore?
We still can.
We still can? For right now?
For now.
I mean, college board has all these goofy rules that's out there right now, but yes, ma'am, that's, that's, those, those are the minor leagues of getting kids ready, their students ready to take AP courses when they get into high school, those pre-AP courses. We do have those at all of our middle schools.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brown. Definitely a bright spot in the district and we appreciate your efforts. Okay, now we're coming to public participation. We have two speakers signed up tonight, first one being Mr. Bob Brewer. Come on down.
is Constitution Day. This evening I would like to talk about why we have a Constitution Week law and why, in effect, we do not. We have a Constitution Week law because Senator Brian Hughes, then Representative Hughes, passed a law in 2004 declaring that every school receiving federal funds shall have a program on the Constitution on September 17th of such year for the students served by that educational institution. We have this supreme law, the Constitution, to protect the principles or truths that were declared 11 years earlier in our Declaration of Independence. Those principles which we were given, which were given us in the greatest of the great books, the Bible of Judeo-Christian religion. These principles or truths declared in the Declaration and equality given by the laws of nature and nature's God. Those truths are self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The Declaration continues that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The Constitution lays out limited enumerated powers that the federal government is authorized to do. Everything beyond those powers is reserved to the states or to the people. Perhaps the reason we do not observe our Constitution or our Constitution Week law is because if all people knew the strict limitations on the federal government, the Ponzi scheme defined by our ever-accelerating debt would be questioned and possibly stopped by citizens who would know the original intent of the contract that is our supreme law. The preeminent reason the Constitution was written beyond the principles described in the Declaration are five words in the preamble and seven words in the guarantee clause, provide for the common defense and protect each of them, the states, against invasion. Those words were mentioned only once in the last 18 months by only one of our legislators and that was when the Constitution was read on the floor of the U.S. House. I have a Google alert that alerts me every time Article 4, Section 4 pops up and that's the only time it triggered. Why is it not, why is, why is not one elected representative in the entire United States obeying their oath to protect and defend the Constitution? Could it be, could it be because if they do, their gravy train would be over? The unconstitutional expenditure of trillions of unpayable debt would cease. Citizens would be free from the unconstitutional integrity imposed by the unconstitutional alphabet ABC agencies that are legislative, executive, and judicial branches combined that are writing law, enforcing law, and adjudicating law without our Congress, our President, or our Supreme Court ever hearing a peep about the injustices they impose. Everyone knows our country is in crisis, that our country is divided into Republican and Democrat tribes battling for power. What everyone doesn't know is that if they knew their Constitution and held those they vote for to their oath, that 90% of our problems could be resolved in several legislative cycles. It's time to learn, it's time to enforce, it's time to once again be free in the liberty of our Declaration and our Constitution. It's time to be we, the people.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Next, we have R.M. Trowbridge Jr. Trowbridge or Trowbridge?
Trow.
Trow, okay, thank you. Come on up to the podium.
Oh, I have this, this is my first time here. I was born here in the 30th century. And I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to work on this. I can, I'm on the floor, I can say what I can say, what I can do.
All right, well, thank you. Well, yep, just sit back and observe, because you're about to find out.
[laughing]
All right, duly noted. I will thank both of you for speaking and we're moving on to our business, legal, finance, and consent agenda. Usually we pool gifts and donations so we can give credit to those who have donated to us. Does anybody else have anything they want to pool or do I have a motion to approve items A, C, and D with the exception of B?
Mr. President, I move that we approve items A, C, and D as stated.
Second. Thank you. I have a second, Mr. Sterling. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. And then, okay, gifts and donations.
Always an enjoyable, always an enjoyable portion of this annual, or excuse me, annual, monthly school board meetings are our acknowledgement of our friends and partners in the community. Tonight we have another solid partner in the community with us and that's Hall Buick GMC who sponsors the GM Employee of the Year Award. Tonight they're providing $5,000 to our communications department so that we can bestow that award onto an outstanding employee. This year it was one of our managers of maintenance and that was Mr. Robert Grant. When air conditioners don't, don't function like they're supposed to, when the plumbing doesn't function like it's supposed to, I've been there with him at midnight, so has Mr. Sanchez, when those things happen. Mr. Grant is always there. He is certainly not a guy that says no, but he always finds out the most economical, efficient, and expedient way to do things. So, very proud of Hall Buick being a partner of us, Hall Buick GMC, excuse me, and we are certainly proud that they are continuing their sponsorship of our staff and our students.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or above, beyond that? Motion to approve gifts and donations.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the gift donation of $5,000 from Hall Buick.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, motion carries. Okay, moving on to curriculum instruction and consent agenda. Are we pulling anything from this, Marty, or?
No, just unless somebody wants to pull it, but I do have a brief overview of a couple of items. Unless you want to pull them individually. No, OH organizational health, our continued contract that actually we survey our staff and faculty at our campuses to gauge the climate and the culture of those campuses. And then also additional seats for our Voyager SOPRIS learning that's proving to be fairly successful right now as far as our push to improve the phonics instruction in our school system at this time. That's what's in this consent agenda.
Okay, any comments or questions before I entertain a motion?
I don't know about Mr. Sterling, but I participated in this OH organizational health program and it proved to be very beneficial to my campus.
Yes, I did, and it was beneficial, very beneficial.
It's a good diagnostic and it does correlate to performance as well, so we're very pleased with it. And we've really whittled the costs down because some of the services we probably didn't need. So, we're really proud to bring this a leaner contract to you as we've done over the last couple, three years.
Good deal. Anybody want to make a motion to approve these items?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 12, A through D.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Now for an exciting part of the night, a construction update. We sure do have a lot going on. Mr. Loper?
Sit back and enjoy this virtual tour of our progress that Mr. Loper went to introduce, followed by the two videos, and then we have Cherie Jones and Brady Beddingfield, our two project managers at both high schools here to answer questions after that. Mr. Loper?
Thank you. As he said, just for your viewing pleasure, if they say a picture's worth a thousand words, we're hoping that this, these videos are much more for y'all. They are narrated by our own Mrs. Jones and Mr. Beddingfield, we're pretty excited about it. But just to catch you up on, on some things that have happened since the last construction update, we have had in July a bond oversight meeting, went over all the financials, actually went on a tour with those members that could go, so we have another one coming up here in October 17th. I was told by our boss Pamela Keen that that's when we're having it, so that's when we'll have it. So, without stalling any longer, let's, let's take a look at John Tyler.
Now we're able to see the backside of the new building section, which is considered the fine arts area. This is made up of the band hall, orchestra, and choir rooms, student practice rooms, ensemble rooms, and equipment storage. As you can tell, the brick masonry is in progress here. You're now able to see the newly renovated exterior courtyard that will have a direct connection to the library media center, providing for a great opportunity for outdoor learning. As we progress over the existing building, you will notice the white roofing as compared to the existing gray roofing. In addition to the interior renovation phases, it is important that we complete the new roofing over the building sections in order to protect our new finishes as the renovation progresses. As we look south, this is a great view of the magnitude of the new additions and the connection points to the existing buildings. To the right of the campus, a notable new building structure is visible in dark brick. This is the new John Tyler Auxiliary Practice Gymnasium. This gym was completed in August and turned over for student occupancy. We've actually held our first volleyball tournaments there during the first week, and while this is really a practice gym, it actually seats almost four hundred spectators. This is a view of, of the varsity locker room. Where we're standing actually used to be part of the rubber gym. We've taken in part of the rubber gym for renovation and created locker rooms and restrooms and coaches' offices. We are now approaching the main entryway, which will provide a prominent focal point to the new building. Underneath us will be the new concrete bus lanes, parking, sidewalk, and landscaping. We are now in the main lobby, which will provide access to the receptionist, administration area, and hallways that lead to the academic wings. This lobby will have a modern collegiate feel with elevated walkway bridges and abundance of natural lighting and streamlined architectural finishes. Eventually, this will also be a major connection point to the existing campus. As we progress down the hallway, you see that the ceramic tile wainscoting. To the left, we have career and technology classrooms and labs, and this will be a great view out to the front parking lot. What you see here is our elevated seating portion of our gym lobby. This will be a great space to, to hang out in before the games, and you'll be able to look over the rail down into the competition gym lobby. And again, we're heading down the hallway. You can see finishes are picking up here. We've got ceiling grid, we'll start installing lights and air duct work. To the left, we have more career and technology classrooms, including our culinary arts practicum class, and now we're back to our entry lobby on bridge. We want to take this opportunity once again to thank the taxpayers of Tyler and Smith County for providing us with the opportunity to make the major improvements to the John Tyler High School campus, and we are so excited about what the future holds at this campus.
Honoring the legacy of the past and moving forward with a commitment to build a state-of-the-art high school serving the faculty and students in the fall of 2020, the Facility Service Department is proud to present the new construction progress of Robert E. Lee High School. One of the main attractions of the school design is the south entrance of the academic building facing Shiloh. The three-story academic building is a facility that embraces the traditional architectural feel of the Tyler community. The exterior is a mixture of brick, cast stone, and glass fiber reinforced concrete for the cornice detailing, columns, entry pediments, and balcony balusters. The courtyard is the main central focus of the academic building area. It faces the main entrance, media, library area south, career and technology to the east, art and art studio classrooms are to the north, and this gives art students the opportunity to have class outside, drawing in great inspiration for their artwork. And the cafeteria is to the west, which will provide student access to eat outside as well as provide functions for events. Now let's take a look at the interior of the academic building. As you enter the building, you're immediately drawn into the grand space and invited with beautiful architectural wood features and ornate stair railings. This leads up to the second floor that looks over the media center. The media center is located between the academic classrooms and access to the courtyard. This quiet space functions as a library with multiple charging stations, access to power for laptop usage, offers state-of-the-art technology such as HDMI connectivity and accessibility of wireless connections. There are many media areas located throughout the academic building that can be used for meeting spaces and student breakout areas. In keeping with the architectural features, you will find continuation of ornate railings and stained wood ceilings throughout. Collaboration spaces outside of all classrooms can be used for group work or multipurpose for students and faculty. All corridors have wainscot towel, VCT flooring, and high-performance fabric wall covering that can be used to hang up posters. The classrooms will accommodate up to twenty-eight students. It's equipped with state-of-the-art technologies such as seventy-five inch interactive flat panel TVs that teachers may use for planning lessons and use as learning tool to teach class. There is natural lighting in most classroom settings. This promotes a healthy learning environment and adds many beneficial effects on student overall classroom success. Let's continue our journey to the fine arts part of the academic building. The band hall will be the new home of the Red Raiders, holding two hundred and fifty students, two major ensemble rooms, director offices, band library, instrument and uniform storage, and easy access to unload equipment and instruments. In addition, there is a choir, orchestra, and dance drill hall with similar features. The newly updated performing arts center will seat over seven hundred students, family, and friends. This venue features a new sound system, LED and theatrical lighting, newly upholstered seating, new carpet, and new acoustical panels. The back end of the theater loft area will allow stage crews to have easy access to move props around and ability to build props in a new scene shop. There are dressing rooms to prepare for performances as well. The opening of the performing arts center will be October of 2019. This is our first major milestone for the project. We are on schedule to complete the academic building August of 2020, and its steer sports facilities will follow shortly thereafter. We just want to thank our taxpayers for all your support, and we look forward to sharing this new facility with the Tyler community.
Okay, well, those were enjoyable, exciting. Does anybody have any questions about construction on either campus?
I would like to express my appreciation to Mr. Loper for taking Dr. Nation and I around to both high schools. We truly got our walk that day. Those are very large buildings, expensive hallways, just beautiful. I'm excited about the possibilities of what would be taking place in these new buildings when they are totally open and ready for students to access them. I, I know the community will be proud, and I too appreciate the community supporting us and voting to pass these bonds so that we could have these two new facilities. So Tim, thank you, and then thank you to our architects. Yes.
I want to add that we are on time and within budget.
You preempted my question. Thank you, Mr. Loper. I've gotten to walk through both of those facilities as well back in, I guess, July when the, we had our oversight committee meeting and popped in on that and got a tour in, and I'm just so excited that our kids are going to get to have these buildings. And to be, let's see, December of 2019 is when John Tyler will, the new portion will be ready, correct? So that's right around the corner. That's, it's going to be cool. So anybody else have any comments or questions about construction? Well, thank you both for what you're doing and excited to see the finished product.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Great videos too, with the drone footage. Okay, future business.
Yes, sir. This board will be interviewing on September twentieth at the K. Bailey Hutchinson Convention Center in Dallas for the State Board of the Year. And we can't say that enough that this group was named as one of the five honor boards in the state. Y'all have done a lot of work these last five-plus years. It's taken a lot of courage to do some of the things that you've done, and it's, it's, it's warming that the state of Texas, other school boards, other superintendents have recognized, other school systems have recognized what y'all have done. So I want to make sure and state that publicly that as, 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 as our football teams are getting ready to win football games on Friday night, this group will be competing at eleven o'clock on, on Friday in Dallas. So excited to be there with y'all. September twenty-third is the board workshop. October is a board workshop. That's where we'll receive our legislative update from some, from Roy Knight. He's been here before to provide us some, some statutory required training. He's going to do that again. October tenth is our normal monthly board workshop, and then next October twenty-first is our regularly scheduled meeting for the school board.
Okay. Well, I look forward to competing this Friday to maybe bring home a little bit of hardware for Tyler, Texas. It sure is an honor to serve this community. So coming to the time for adjournment.
Move adjourn. Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Adjourned.